I have not been able to keep my pipe straight.
Charlie Cooper is going to give our invocation tonight.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for being in this place tonight, Lord, to be among the people's business. We just ask that everything that's said or done here would be accorded according to your will and would be pleasing to you, Father. Bless our community, Lord. Bless the family represented here in those who couldn't live it tonight, Father. Bless our nation and bless our world, Lord. Bring us peace. In his name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Breckler, would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Please press your tablets. Me, Stowe, Johnny Hall, Bill Melton, Mary Collins.
There.
Oh, it does. Number one is approval of our agenda. I need a motion in a second, please. I have a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Arnold. If you approve the agenda, please vote. A voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number two is the citizens' forum. Mr. Fresson, would you come over the list, please? It's laying up there.
Thank you, Rob.
Tim Vick, come forward, please.
I'm nervous hearing y'all. It's the first time I've ever done this, so y'all bear with me, please. Good evening. My name is Tim Vick. I've been a resident of Benton County's Second District for most of my life. I would like to begin my comments this evening by thanking the commission for allowing concerned citizens such as myself the opportunity to air their grievances or provide their support for the various resolutions laid before this commission. Tonight, I stand in opposition to Resolution 2025-1117-08. That resolution calls for the appropriation of forty-two thousand of our taxpayer dollars so that the county can enter into a contract with Flock Safety to provide AI-trained license plate readers in various locations throughout this county. I want to be very clear. I am not here to indict the integrity or the motives of the sheriff nor any first responders working in this county. To the contrary, I'm very thankful. We have people willing to put their lives on the line to protect and serve the citizens of this county. I am here to voice my concern over the county's potential legal and financial liabilities if proposed solution is passed. In my heart of hearts, I believe many residents of this county share a somewhat similar position, and that is the privacy and civil liberties of the citizens of this nation have slowly been eroding over the past several decades. A multitude of issues can be attributed to this erosion. However, it is unmistakable the rapid development and implementation of advanced digital data analytics is a key factor in this decline. Neither the legislative or judicial bodies of our state and federal governments have demonstrated the ability to get ahead of the privacy and security challenges present in these evolving technologies. In fact, as I stand before you this evening, there are several legal challenges currently being adjudicated in the courts across this nation. While the merits of each case may be unique, there is one common theme. They all involve law enforcement and the use of Flock surveillance systems. Yes, that is the very same system this resolution proposes in solving in this county. I would like to highlight two particular cases that seem to back my concerns. One is out of Virginia, and the other one is out of the state of Washington. The Virginia case involves the Institute of Justice suing Norfolk County's use of Flock surveillance system on behalf of a resident of the jurisdiction. This case is significant for two reasons. The county is named in the suit, not Flock. Let me repeat that. The county is named in the suit, not Flock. Also, this is the same legal group that recently won a suit against the TWRAs' illegal surveillance and property rights infringement of a Benton County resident. With the legality of surveillance systems like Flock still working its way through the courts, what does the legal future hold for our county if the commission elects to proceed with this resolution? Do we have the legal and financial means to defend our use of the same system in court? The Washington case involves a recent ruling in which the judge determined surveillance records must be made available to the public via public records request. The immediate actions of numerous law enforcement agencies using Flock across the state was to shutter their operations over privacy and security concerns. Where were those concerns before the surveilled were granted access to these records? You say, but wait. This can't happen in Tennessee. Current state code classifies records generated by license plate readers as confidential and only available for law enforcement agencies for investigative purposes only.
Mr. Vick, your five minutes are up, sir.
May I finish? I'm almost done here.
Yes.
Thank you. Let me find where I was placed. For investigative purposes, most probably are not aware the legislative body put a sunset on this classification and that the special exception for these readers is set to expire July of 2026. What new burdens does this classification change put on the county? Are we ready for this? Now, I quickly point my direction towards Flock. Senior staff writers Thomas Brewster and Cyrus Harvard published an article on Forbes in February of last year. In this article, the writers wrote or suggested that it was a rush to install, Flock was in a rush to install surveillance cameras. Flock Safety repeatedly broke state laws in at least five states. In two of the states, agencies banned Flock staff from installing additional cameras. The article also went on to explain that the spectacular growth of this company has been bolstered by the unpermitted deployment of their cameras. In response to these findings, Josh Thomas, a Flock spokesman, simply indicated, "We certainly haven't been perfect, but we try to respond and fix issues and make efforts to retropermit as needed." Does this corporate history raise red flags with you? It does with me. And to top things off, Flock Safety CEO Garrett Langley, in the same Forbes video interview, referred to individuals such as myself as terrorists for simply questioning the privacy, security concerns of the surveillance systems offered by his company. Should this county be doing business with a company whose CEO thinks a sizable--
Mr. Vick, you've gone way over your time. You need to--
I'd ask you to consider allowing--
No, sir.
--this--
No, sir.
--through, Rob.
You need to find your end sentences and end your comments, okay, please?
I will. I will bear with you. Should this county be doing business with a company whose CEO thinks a sizable portion of the residents should be considered terrorists? I think not. In closing, I respectfully request each of you pause and consider these potential liabilities before casting your vote on this resolution. I hope you come to the same conclusion that I have and vote no. Once again, thank you for giving me the time to address my concerns on this resolution, and I apologize about--
That's okay. Accept your pardon.
Thank you.
Robert Jackson.
Can you pop up the slides?
Hi.
Okay, perfect. And that was a wonderful presentation that covered about half of my slides because I'm speaking on the same subject, so I'll just focus on the technical things that I felt that Flock wasn't quite truthful with us when they did their presentations in the last two sessions. So basically, the first slide is just a sample of all the things that Flock provide, from surveillance cameras to mobile cameras to AI software and to drones with thermal imaging. So all of this equipment right here is basically military-grade surveillance equipment. This is top-line stuff, and it is just, it's just incredible, the technology that they have here. Next slide. So in the presentation that Flock gave us, we, the commissioners, asked them a couple of questions, which was, have there been any lawsuits, legal challenges, or litigations? I think the previous presenter covered most of the legal challenges. I'll skip those, other than to add that there's now a congressional hearing investigation on Flock. So that's in Congress now in the past couple of weeks that that's been opened up. Flock video and metadata are erased after thirty days. I don't believe that's true. And the cameras only deal with license plates and not people. So we'll go through these three issues on three slides. I'll make it real quick. So again, the Institute of Justice has a lawsuit. The United States Congress is doing a congressional hearing, and in Washington's Superior Court said that these are now public records. So these are some pretty heavyweight cases, and Flock told us that there was no cases at all when they presented to us. Next slide. So this is the scary part. So Flock video and metadata are erased after thirty days. So if we follow the process of taking the image file when you drive by the camera, to the point that it goes into the database that gets transmitted across the country, the first thing that happens is an image file is captured and stored for thirty days. So down there, you see a picture of a car, and it's got a Grateful Dead sticker on. So that is absolutely deleted after thirty days. Next, machine learning comes in, AI, and it looks at that photograph, and it captures the license plate, and then it sees that there's a Grateful Dead sticker on the rear window. So that's called the two fingerprints that it's getting off the image. That gets deleted after thirty days. The next thing that happens, and this is where the real machine learning and AI takes off, is the vector file, the metadata file is turned into a vector file and then dimensioned. So here, what we see is this file is dimensioned by a factor of ten. So we take the Grateful Dead sticker, and we say, "Grateful Dead sticker, deadhead, pot, drugs, hippie, the dead, concert, acid, trucking, Jerry Garcia," all gets added to that. So if people are searching in their squad car, or if they're searching for information, all of those will now hit, and that's called a vector file. And then, when you take the vector file, and each hit of that camera, each photo, every time you drive through, gets put into what they call their aggregate vector database. Those two, if you look at the Flock contract, it says Flock owns that data in perpetuity. They can do whatever they want with it, and they can sell it. It's in the contract. Next slide. And here's that the cameras only deal with license plates and not people. So I cut these off of the Flock website, and you can see right here, "Search once, see everything. Connect the dots. One search for every system: RMS, CAD, IPR, JAL, OSNT, and public records in one place." So the key thing here is, what is OSNT? That's Open Source Intelligence. And what that is, is that's just scrubbing the Internet and collecting anything that they can get their hands on from the Internet. So basically, from the license plate, you can jump all the way over to the latest Facebook post that that person has made, and it's right there on their website, on their-- --from the Flock website. Excuse me. Okay, next. So my second question, beyond was Flock truthful with the county, is has there been a competitive bid? My understanding is this is over twenty-five thousand dollars. Have we looked at any of these other companies, Genetics, Rhombus, Vidaca, Deep Sentinel, Stracks, or Cloudstructure? Do we, for something like this, I know like the Department of Education or the Highway Committee, anything over twenty-five thousand, we have to go up a competitive bid? The second thing is, has anybody looked at the contract? Have we had a Benton County lawyer actually look at what's in the contract? Because the contract basically says two things that are super important. They get to keep the vectorized data. They own it. They can sell it forever, as long as it's in an aggregate database. The second thing is, like the previous speaker said, it doesn't matter what Flock does wrong. The county is liable for the mistakes. It actually says in the contract that they suggest that if you get a hit on a license plate reader, you should call your own 911 line to validate that it's a correct hit before you act on that. Next slide. And then, this is how confident people are that this technology is just spot-on. This officer visited a lady. He thought that she was stealing packages, and you can see, it's her, it's a hundred percent, it's a hundred percent locked in. I have you twenty times in a month. It's a lock, a hundred percent, no doubt. It's a hundred percent, doubt a lock, it's a hundred percent, no doubt a lock. And it wasn't her. He was serving her with charges just for driving through the county twenty times because she had blonde hair like the thief on the door had, and it wasn't her. All right? So I just ask, can we delay the vote until, if you've never heard what a vector file is, or what an aggregate database is, or if we haven't had the lawyer look at this, or if we should be looking at competitive bids for things over twenty-five thousand dollars? Can we just pause for a month or two, or even for a quarter or two, until the legal stuff works its way through before making a decision on the cameras? Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the public forum. We have three people that signed up tonight. Kimberly Benifield, will you come forward, please?
My name's Kimberly Benifield, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Benton County Senior Center. I've heard a lot of people asking, "What's going on? I wish I knew. I'm there every day, and I can't tell you what's going on." It's because we're all left in the dark. We're left with a lot of rumors, a lot of hearsay, a lot of he said, she said, they're doing this, they're doing that. We don't know what's going on, and I think they're trying to keep the seniors in the dark. This is the fifth time that we've had an opportunity to have someone speak. This is the second of those five opportunities that we actually got to stand up and speak. The radio station let us speak, and now I'm here. There's always a reason why we can't speak. We don't have a forum. You're not on the agenda. Oh, my hands are tied. There's some legal aspects now. Something every single time. I work at the center. I don't work for the center. My office is there. I'm actually the Meals on Wheels coordinator. But being there every day lets me see and hear a lot of what is going on. And over and over, I say, "What is going on?" A whole lot of nobody knows nothing. That's what's going on. There are some things that I hear that are hearsay, some things that I hear that I believe are true. I might think somebody said something true that contradicts what you think somebody said was true. Those are our own opinions. But I can only stand on what I hear and see myself. Okay, let's see. When I first started there, about two and a half years ago, they had a lot of fun, a lot of stuff going on, and I liked it there. And that continued on until early this year, when Mary Ellen Wersler was let go. That was done in secret more than anything. And if anybody wants to stand here and deny it, they can. But the meeting that finally came from the supposedly many, many, many attempts to fix it was only attended by a very select few people. So basically, oh, Mary Ellen's gone. What? Nobody knew what was going on. That's what happens at the Senior Center on a regular basis. We are left in the dark. We are lied to. Let me see. I got notes, and I don't know. I'm sure they're more than five minutes worth. I'm already halfway through, and I haven't even got to the end of those paragraphs. I gotta talk fast. So basically, I'm gonna tell you, my big concern for myself here is I had a someday hoped to attend the Senior Center as a participant because they had so much fun. I don't want to go there anymore. You don't know what's going on there from one day to the next. They change the calendar all the time. There's supposed to be a Thanksgiving dinner. Every year, they have a Thanksgiving dinner. Somebody took it upon themselves this year to change it to a Thanksgiving potluck on Bingo Day, when they usually just have a regular potluck. Okay, well, so they're gonna get fed, but the point is, they've changed it. Things you come to expect, you can't expect anymore. So I don't want to go there because I don't know what to expect. I used to invite people there. Not anymore. I tell them, stay away. And I think really, that's what a lot of people want, honestly. That's one of those rumors. The rumor is that we don't really want activities going on here. We just want people here when they need some help with something. Otherwise, we just want to sit back in our chairs and do nothing. That's my perception of the attitude there. I can't prove that. I haven't heard that with my own ears. Something to think about, though. I did hear the mayor say that the dismissal of Haley, which caused another uproar, was not a matter of personnel. Plainly said that. Yes, it was. It was absolutely a matter of personnel. He could not tell you one single thing Haley did wrong. He said there are things that should have been done and things that shouldn't have been done. He never named one specific thing. He went so far as to say, "I'd be glad to give her a recommendation." How do you even say that about somebody who's just fixing a fire? Didn't make any sense. That's what's going on at the Senior Center. Let me mention a few of the rumors I've heard so you know why I'm always confused. How was that building acquired? How much money was spent on that? Lot of money, but guess what? The seniors only occupy half of that building, so you cannot contribute all of that money to being spent on the seniors. I'm not real stupid. How was the bank building acquired? That's another big gossip thing there. How was the bank building acquired? Don't really know for sure. I heard there was some real sneaky underhanded, "Let's make sure people are gone." There's more and more rumors, but my time is up. But you get my point. That's what's going on, and that's what needs to stop. They need to be included in decisions that affect them. They've done their time. Let them have some fun.
Thank you, Ms. Benifield. Denise Jensen?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am also a participant at the Senior Center. And many seniors recently went to the radio station interview with Mayor Mark Ward, and it was discouraging to hear that there seems to be no intention. And as of tonight, hearing that Haley won't be back, it made us feel as though our voices of seniors and the very people the center exists to serve were not being considered, even after a petition of many signatures. After all, the center is for the seniors. Every decision should begin there. Over the past three years, I have attended, Haley has consistently shown professionalism, compassion, and genuine dedication to us seniors and the Senior Center. Haley is full of life, energetic, cheerful, truly engaging with every person who walks through the door. She makes each one of us feel valued, welcomed, and understood. Haley created an environment where we all felt happy, safe, and important. Haley wasn't just another employee. She was a person many of us relied on for instruction, communication, fun, and support. Haley's absence feels confusing and deeply felt because a decision seems to have been made without fully considering the experience of those who spend their time there. It's also difficult not to notice that most members of the agent committee and even within the mayor's office have longstanding personal connections with the assistant director, and those close relationships play a large role in who is heard and believed. It naturally raises concerns about whether the outcome of Haley's dismissal was influenced by familiarity rather than fairness. To us seniors, it feels as though our perceptions were set aside while certain other voices were given more weight. When information reaches the mayor's office, often seems to come only from one side, and that raises a fair question. Why is one group's hearsay considered more credible than the others? What do seniors ourselves see and experience firsthand? Most members of the agent committee do not even attend the Senior Center, maybe one or two, yet their voices seem to carry more weight than those who actively participate at the center. We seniors have not been asked for our perspective, and it feels as though our side of the story is never heard. That is why we are asking the mayor, obviously, it's all been settled, so it really doesn't matter, to revisit the situation. We want him to talk directly to the seniors to hear what we have witnessed or heard. It is only right to hear both sides. It feels like there is a biased agenda and very political. It is not too late to move toward fairness. Real change is listen to the seniors, respect our experiences, and we value our voices. We are the ones who attend and know what we have lost and why it matters. As far as the last director leaving on that day, how many of you in the committee were actually there, heard, and saw what happened? There were other times things were said that weren't heard by all. If the proof is hearsay, it's like going to court, and only one side gets to testify. And yet, it's the other side, and it's not ours. I'm sure-- I'm sure none of you, I hope none of you are ever put in a position where your side is never heard with any validity. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Sue Webb?
I'm Sue Webb, also a Tennesse Senior Center. I love the center. I worked at the other center eight years, and I enjoyed it. Haley was there. Then when we moved to the new building, not so. It was tension, but Haley was there, being fair, helpful. She loved the seniors. It wouldn't be the same without her. I've been past my Haley. She was helping make things better. We need Haley back. And Haley needs a closure of why she was fired. I know you don't have to in the state of Tennessee. But it is what it is, and God has the last word. Thank you for Ms. Benfield.
Thank you, Sue. Number four on our agenda is the commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner that wants to speak? Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I want to speak a few minutes about the resolution that we pulled, or budgets pulled, talking about, like Mr. Dick said, about opportunity to speak. I spoke to you offline and a few more. You say we go by the rules of order and procedure mandated back in 2017. And that plainly states that on an open forum, "The free communication of thoughts and opinion is one of the individual's right of man, and every citizen may freely speak." This is the Constitution from the state of Tennessee. And it states, "Any citizen may, without prior notice, after recording their name directly and topic on the provided sign-in sheet addressed to the board and the topic regarding county issues for up to five minutes." Any topic regarding county issues up to five minutes. But you're telling me, Roseanne, that there's this state thing coming out, 844-112, that says we don't have to give, or we can't give the people of Benton County just five minutes or three minutes to talk about any topic? And just like Mr. Dick says, talk about praising us for something, which we don't get very much now, for sure. But talk about anything we got going on. Explain to me, and you pulled this resolution in budget and said it wasn't right, and you explained to me a little bit about this, but I want you to explain to the people here why you pulled it. Do you see us ever getting the opportunity for someone to just come up and talk about something? Some of the folks here, they don't know to go to Charlie's office and sign an agenda and things of that nature. They've never had to do that in the past. But you're saying some state law, 844-112, says that we don't have to do that anymore. And, you know, I want to do that. I want the opportunity of Benton County to come in and say things, you know? Used to, you find out about the stop sign down at Eva. We changed that, you know, for the fire trucks to then come through. You find out about a pothole somewhere down in Harmon's Creek. You find out about a road or a bridge. Or you find out about just anything about the government buildings, rails. We don't have that opportunity anymore, and we don't, you know, without that opportunity, you don't get the opportunity to be praised either. So would you explain the rules of order procedures of 2017 that you say we fall under? But you say now that it looks like in 7123, this 844-112 law come out that says we do not have to give an open forum to the citizens of Benton County? Or maybe if Mr. Daniels King is voted in for our county attorney, since we ain't had one in about, what, four months? How many? Four? Six months? That, you know, we'll get some guidance here. And, you know, and that, once you explain that, the other thing I'd like someone to explain to me is, and I've had lots of employees for the courthouse come to me and ask how a seventeen-year-old individual with, I know personally by talking to her, or the individual, has no education, and then now she's gonna make $35,000, and just got her by your office. By your office employee says she just got her GED four or five months ago, or four or five weeks ago, maybe six. I want to know how that operates, when you've got twenty more employees here in Benton County that make within maybe $200 of that, and fourteen of them make way below that, that has a lot more deals going on. I don't even remember seeing this job posted. I know what this individual told me when she was making my coffee at McDonald's, but I want to hear it from you. So, Roseanne, if you get a chance, because I want you to talk about another, I want you to explain to everybody these rules of order, then we can all ponder on the other subject. I ain't got time to talk about Mr. Berry's situation, and maybe we broke the sunshine law by having a closed-door meeting even before we had a lawsuit started, and then you want to give updates to a board. We got so much going on, like a few of the people have said, that it's just amazing to me. And I yield the floor, but I do would like to have things explained. Please.
I've explained it to you several times, but I will, okay, and please do not interrupt.
No, ma'am, I will not.
The rules of order, it's a law that every county adopts of rules of order and procedures. That's a law. We have to adopt it. Once we adopt it, the county commission votes on it, and it becomes our rules and procedures that we follow. The process of changing those is given to the duty of the Budget Committee only. The Budget Committee, if they see fit that they want to change these rules of order, then they present that. It goes before their committee. They vote on it, and they present it to the county commission. That's how the rules of order are changed. But we haven't had a change since, I think you've got the, you've got my copy there. Okay, since 2017, nobody's changed anything. So it was put in there that the people will speak for five minutes. That was not my law. That's not my rule. It's in those rules of order, and it was adopted and approved by the county commission. So, once we have those, when the state passes a law that affects the public meetings, and it says public meetings, we have to abide by that. It's a state law. And they passed that law in July of 2023, the state legislator did, not us, not me, that says that during the public comment that they have to speak about a subject that is germane to the agenda. That's a law. We can't change that law. We can't overlook that law. That law overrides what we have in our rules of order, because it's a state law. You know, we can set any kind of procedure, but if there's a state law that says you can't do that, we can't do it. So that's what we're following, is that state law that was passed two years ago.
Okay, so when we get this county attorney, as a governed body, as a governed body, we could do, we could set our own standards of what we do. Maybe like I said, a county attorney would be able to clear that up.
Okay, back to that. We have posted in the paper several times, Mr. Cooper posted in there, that if you want to talk about something that is not about the agenda, that is not about a resolution or a subject that's coming up that night, you can call the mayor's office. Mr. Cooper will put you on the agenda. That allows you to come up during our county commission meeting, and you can talk about anything you want to, because you have been put on the agenda to speak.
Right.
But the other public forum is the people that are here in the audience that did not sign up. If they want to speak, they have to speak about a resolution that's on air. Business for tonight.
So when you get put on the agenda, like Mr. Dick, he could have put it down for ten minutes. Is that correct or not?
No.
He couldn't. It had to be five minutes. Well, you know, that just really, that just really just kills the communication between the governed body and the community. It really does.
I understand.
But are we looking at that? We talked about that in budget, or I'm not in budget. We talked about it, and we was gonna look at it and maybe change our rules of order. Are we still looking at that or not? So that we can give an opportunity of three minutes, and a commissioner give two, and go up to fifty minutes total. I mean...
Well, they're still getting five minutes. You're not changing anything. If you add three and two, that's five.
You've got thirty minutes now, and you get a total of fifty, so you get more people to go.
Well, I know this doesn't matter to you, but I talked to Mr. Charlie Curtis today. He's our Tennessee County Commissioners Association Director. He said most counties only allow twenty minutes for public forum. Most counties only allow three minutes to speak. So I think that we are doing a little bit better than some counties by allowing a little bit more. And if you will notice, hardly ever do I stop anybody right on the dot at five minutes. I will give them just a little bit more. I think Mr. Dick probably went over three or four minutes, and that's okay. I know Mr. Preston, he and I have a little problem sometimes when his five minutes is up. Most of the time, you have an extra minute or two, don't you, Mr. Preston? I think you would like longer, but I don't shut you up just the minute the bell rings. I know. I mean, that's fine.
You have five minutes.
Okay, what else, Mr. Preston? We need to move on.
No, that's it. Mr. Preston?
I was hoping nobody called that. Is that all?
I caught it.
Is that all for tonight? Okay, anyone else? Mr. Murphy?
I just want to let the commission know, my chairman, that our private act committee, who's been meeting over the past several months, we have come to a conclusion of our work, and we're ready to present the amended private act, amendments to the commission. In the next few days, the commission should get something from Commissioner King's work, very diligently on this and working with the CTS and the Secretary of State's office to amend it in the way that needs to be. So we hope to have, at our regular scheduled meeting, December will be a time where commissioners and public can ask questions of the committee in light of changes and why we're reviewing it. In the December commission meeting, we'll present a resolution that the commission will blow down. And if they pass that, we'll send it on to the legislature, and hopefully they'll take that up and amend our private act for us to clear up and kind of clean up some of the things the commission asks us to do. And if it will be okay, I'm the co-chairman or the vice chairman of the Budget Committee. It is our responsibility to amend the rules and that sort of thing. Months ago, there were some other procedures within that that we looked at, and our county attorney at that time advised us to wait until we had made our amendments to the private act, and got that done, and got that on the way before we took up changing these rules. So there will be a time that I think that we'll take up some matters of that in a couple of months. And Chairman Melton will be in touch with you, I think. That's all I have on my chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fowler, that's another reason that the resolution was pulled. You cannot sponsor that resolution, a resolution to change the rules of order. It has to be sponsored by the Budget Committee.
That's why I asked Mr. Murphy to be there.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'm gonna respond to your question put to me just moments ago. I had a statement prepared for Resolution Seventeen. Verify for me, please. Did I understand Dwayne to say that Seventeen has been pulled?
Yes.
Okay. Now would be the appropriate time to share with everybody my one paragraph. It's been shown for certain that at least some of the subjects I pick or I choose to discuss is not wanted heard by some. The time pressure alone with the interruptions create the speaker to stumble, the speaker to go off point. It is then the listener is at a loss in understanding what the speaker is trying to even say. It gives the appearance the speaker is not prepared. The speaker is not equipped. And with me, I think at least some of this is planned by opposing views. I yield the floor.
Any other commissioner? Okay, we're going to move on. Number five, for our county mayor, you got anything to say? Number six is our approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. I mean, a motion and a second motion by Commissioner Miller.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Manry. Are you punching your tablets?
I don't have a place to punch it.
Tablet's gone nuts.
Yeah, mine has too.
Okay, all right, well, then we're gonna move on. All in favor of approving the minutes from the previous meeting, say aye. Anyone oppose? Minutes we passed reported to Public Utilities, a motion and a second. Motion by Miller, second by King. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? We're down to our resolutions. Resolution One is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Daniel King as the Benton County Attorney to fulfill the remainder of the current year. Motion and second, please?
Motion.
Motion by King, second by... Okay, we'll put the glasses. I saw his hand go. Okay, that's fine. Mine's not showing. Okay. We're gonna wait just a minute before we vote. He's trying to fix a tablet. Murphy? Mine's not working either. You got it. Okay, that's fine.
Well, heck yeah, I love that. I loosen up the...
Okay, the floor is open for discussion about the county attorney. Does anyone have anything to say? Or ask, discuss?
Is King here?
Yes, he is. Mr. King?
Come forward if you'd like to.
I'm being considered, open to questions. If you want to hear a little something about me, I'm open to do that as well. Most of you are gonna know me, or know of me, maybe, but maybe not all of you. First and foremost, I would lead with that I'm a follower of Jesus. So if you choose to appoint me, you're appointing just that, a follower of Jesus, first and foremost. Secondly, I am a pastor of a small country church here in Benton County. Thirdly, I am a husband. Fourthly, I'm a father. Fifthly, I am an attorney. I am a member of Rainy Casa Rivera &amp; Bell. That's a law firm that was established in Jackson, Tennessee, fifty years ago, actually, this year. And so we're celebrating fifty years. We have offices now in Memphis, Martin, Jackson, South Fulton, Kentucky, Nashville, and Chattanooga. And so that's the spiel about me. My dedication would be to... Uh, and, uh, so that's, that's the spiel about me. Uh, my dedication would be to the rule of law and that would be my, uh, understanding of the position if so appointed or confirmed. And, uh, that would be my effort. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have. Okay, well, good. Yes, sir. A distant relative, a ball coach growing up, someone that I've known my whole life. Uh, his son, Michael King, who's the judge over in Carroll County, he and I grew up together. His younger son, Shane, also. I'm kinda in between those two in age, but have been around them my whole life. But we're, we're related, but it's, you know, I don't know that it would qualify under the laws in the state of Tennessee as relation.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. King.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So we're ready to vote now? Tablets are open for voting?
You didn't say adjourned.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Welcome aboard, Mr. King. Resolution number two is a resolution by Mayor Ward to formally appoint yearly state certified road superintendent Ryan Hicks to position a Benton County Road Superintendent. We have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Bane. Anyone have any questions? Or wanna make any comments? I see none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? They're calling it standing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Resolution three is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Colleen Ty to the Benton County Animal Shelter Board to fulfill the remainder of Brittany Fuller's unexpected, unexpired term. Motion by Arnold and a second by Price. Any questions for the mayor? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here. Yes. We were discussing whether or not we could swear in Mr. Vick tonight or not.
You sure this won't show up on the ballot?
No, no.
No, we don't.
You can, you can listen to the, uh, you can listen to the meeting tomorrow, Rocky. Now, we're to resolution four. Okay, resolution three is passed. We're on resolution four. It's to reappoint Timmy Pike to the Benton County Airport Board for a four-year term. Need a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Miller. Okay, any questions?
Is he here?
Yes.
Okay, the board's open to vote. Everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is fifteen yes. Resolution five is a resolution by the mayor to budget funds in the amount of $12,450 received by the Benton County Library from the City of Camden to the proper line item for expenditure. We have a motion by Arnold and a second by Douglas. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Resolution six is a resolution by the director of schools, Mark Lawrence, to budget funds received from the project raised grant to the proper line item in the school budget for expenditure. We have a motion by King and a second by Fowler. Any questions about the resolution? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Resolution seven is by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to move funds in the amount of $3,985 within the Highway Department budget to cover a shortfall in workers' compensation insurance. We have a motion by Fowler and a second by King. Bring it to the floor. Do we have any questions for the highway superintendent? There are none, so please vote. Resolution eight is a resolution by Sheriff Tim Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $42,000 from the unassigned fund balance in the general fund to an expenditure line item to cover costs associated with entering into a contract with block safety to provide license plate readers in multiple locations throughout the county. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Bane and, uh, Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Bane. Anyone wanna make any comments? Commissioner or nothing?
I have had several phone calls echoing the same sentiments that these two gentlemen earlier did. And I'm not sure that we shouldn't seriously think about taking some time to think about this and do some more research. I know that there's lots of discussions in the county regarding it.
Anyone else? Arnold, you're next.
I understand it, though. It's a big concern. I think we all kinda worried about a big brother watching over everything that we do. You know, every time I go outside nowadays and I get a cell phone and they're calling and asking me, whatever you do. My concern, uh, I'm in favor of the law thing, but I've been doing some talk with some of the law enforcement around the area and asking them what their opinion was that they got, uh, if they're getting. For the cause of that, you know, just, you see the big cities and you see on the news where they're pushing people from gangs and everything, they're coming out of cities and pushing over people from all counties. The system's only gonna be as good as what the sheriff department uses. Rocky gets a violation of probation, a DUI, whatever, they're looking for him, or just EDV, or they'll, they'll show up in court, like, put your license plate in that system. And of course, you go pass one of these cameras, get to a back, they send a, uh, alert to all the damage. I talked to a sheriff in the Joining County and he said, you know, uh, they arrested a gentleman that wanted for murder for 10 years, uh, over in Henry County, and he said, that guy, I know him, he said that, uh, you know, "I never dreamed, quote, that a big town would have the block system that I'd be caught, you know, in a small town like that." He said, "I avoided the big city, I avoided, you know, taking all the back roads and all this stuff." And he said, "I come to a big town, catch me at a city park with a block system." Is it gonna be a perfect system? Probably not. There are possibilities of, you know, something happening lately. I mean, there are possibilities of maybe some of these people that just walk out of the door. Our county is so long, we have the interstate running, we're also, I've got two exits only, people getting off at the 1-9 all the time, 133, leaving Henry County with warrants on them, they're coming and hiding in Big Sandy. I know this for a fact, you know, being involved in a lot of probation business in Henry County, where a lot of the people that we got in probation, they got off in Benton County, so they never thought we'd own the town. But our fine gentleman over there in the sheriff department, they got them. So there's your little button, boys. But, uh, the system, you know, if we get 12 cameras that we're looking for, uh, and the sheriff places them in areas that he needs to place them in, and they enter into the system, it's cheaper to just hire them one day. We don't have a time or benefit, we have to hide them, hide them, they get them. But it's, keep an eye on the information that they put in. Again, it's only good if it's what they use it for. But I think in our county, if you go over and see how many cars get off at the 1-9, they get off at the 133, they come through Big Sandy, uh, people's getting out of the city, it's got warrants on them, they're pushing them into the small counties. Sheriff County getting them in Nerza County, coming over to the Henry County, Henry County, the city patrol, sheriff of Henry County, trying to get them. You got Carroll County getting them, the city of Camden. So hopefully it would make our city, our county, a lot safer for our citizens, knowing that we'll be able to get people off, off the road. Nobody, you know, it ain't gonna take a picture of me going down the road in my car, but it breaks the camera. Get a man on that, so it's not... But, you know, I think we really should look at the, they weren't installed in no cost to us. I, I think it's a good system. I don't think it's a perfect system, but I do think it's something that this county needs, have the law enforcement in order to govern our county. Because it's so long, you know, there's no way they'd be able to replace, but when they get those warrants, uh, maybe we can stop that person, who warrants, child rape, somebody killed somebody, somebody's missing, sneaker alert, uh, traffic, whatever the case may be, but I think it is a good program for our county.
Commissioner Bane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just have a quick statement to make. Uh, and first of all, the reason why the price went up to 42,000 is because we decided to go with 12 cameras instead of eight. I think the eight was 24,000. Am I correct? And so that's why it went up to 42,000 on the cost of the cameras. Uh, the city of Camden already has these cameras installed, whether you know it or not. They do have. Chairman can tell you that, testify to that. I was actually on the fence about this for a while, I have to say, but, uh, what changed my mind was a little over a month ago, and I shared this in law enforcement, uh, because I was like, uh, everybody else. I heard the rumors that we would get robo-tickets and, and it'd be an invasion of your privacy and blah, blah, blah. But I was on the internet and, uh, I found a news story out of Georgia. And I condensed it. I'm not gonna tell the man's name, but I'm gonna share it with y'all again. Early Friday morning, a deputy with the Franklin County, Georgia Sheriff's Office was alerted by a block safety camera to a vehicle connected to a missing person. The deputy pulled over the car and found the 25-year-old driver to be a registered sex offender from Idaho. Authorities said he was prohibited from having contact with minor children. Inside the vehicle, deputies discovered a missing juvenile he had taken, kidnapped, from Washington State. He was arrested and then taken to the Franklin County Detention Center. There was more details in this I'm not gonna share. But I don't even wanna think about what this child endured on this trip with this monster. And, and the cameras saved this child's life. We have an obligation to use whatever means possible to protect and find these children and protect citizens from potential harm. These cameras will not be used for ticketing, and as far as misuse goes, anything can be misused. All phone cameras, these cameras right here get used all the time for pornography and everything else. I mean, anything can be misused. Somebody gets drunk, gets in a car, has a wreck, and hurts and kills somebody, they're misusing that vehicle. Do we do away with cars? You know, I mean, anything can be misused. So, um, anyway, uh, I could make a lot of things up for the sake of time that I won't, but this is the reason why I changed my mind. If these cameras save one child from these kind of monsters, it, when a child is, we've got the Amber Alert and that helps. But if there's a license plate tag and they're looking for a child that has been taken from somebody and it goes past them flock cameras and it alerts these deputies over here and they go rescue that child, what price can you put on the life of that child? There's, there's no, no amount of money. And I, I hope nobody feels bad about me changing my mind or anybody in my district. I have to go with my gut and I, I am all for protecting children. If these cameras are misused, then that will be on law enforcement or whoever, but if they save one child, that's why I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bane. Commissioner Fowler, you're next?
Yes. I was like Mike. I've, I've had a lot of concern calls about it. Uh, Debbie, to be honest with you, the city does not have them yet. Uh, they're not, I guess they're looking at maybe July next year. No, they don't have them yet. You know, forty-some thousand dollars for those is quite a bit of money. They may be worth it, but, uh, I'd like, I would like to see us if we could work something with the city and we all save ourselves a little bit of money. Now, you talk about the license plate reader side of it. Did I misunderstand them and said that they say very rarely they don't get the license plate, they get the color of the car, the Grateful Dead, uh, things of that on the car? Is that not when they get their presentation, they said they very rarely get a license plate number? They work off... But what I'm, what I'm, what I think would be a great thing, if we're gonna do this, I think what Kenny and them talked about, the live cameras that maybe at the 1-9, at the exit 126, at the 1-9, and the Loves, that's, that's a great, a great thing, but I've got a lot of kickback, like Mike said, about this. And then listening to a couple of presentations on that, I mean, we may lose a deal on it, but we may be able to work a deal with the city if they're gonna get it. I, I just text George and he said it'll probably be July next year before they're doing anything with theirs. So, you know, that, that could be a great thing. The, and just, just, just an individual, the flock camera's gonna do its job. It's a great thing, but you still got the human side of it that's mad or something to that nature. And then, then if it is true, it stores all of that data, uh, in the last stage of that camera, that, that really ain't a good thing. So with the lawsuits going on, I don't know why we, just like the city is done, why can't we just put it off a little bit? I really, I really do like, and that's just my opinion, I like that live camera at Loves and the 1-9. That would be, I think that would be an awesome thing to start out with. Uh, you've got surrounding counties with lots more money than we do and lots more population, you know, kinda helping us out by having the flock cameras. And, uh, but, yeah, well, again, same thing as Mike. I've got a lot of, a lot of kickback on that right there, and we do represent the people. We're, and we're supposed to dig in a little harder and that's what I'm doing, try to, you know, do the right thing. But anyways, I yield the floor.
Madam Chair, real quick, I apologize if I missed, uh, missed both. I was misinformed about the cameras in the city.
That's okay. The city has bought the cameras. They are purchased. They just have not put them up.
Well, that's, they cleared your budget?
Mm-hmm. They ran the budget. Okay, I'm gonna go with Mr. Lashley because I skipped him a few minutes ago and I'm sorry. Okay, I'm going to go with Mr. Lashley because I skipped him a few minutes ago and I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. If anyone is concerned, and most of the people who have, you know, talked to me about it is a privacy issue. If you have a cell phone, if you have any kind of social media account, you don't really have privacy. They know everything about your life. If you drive down interstates, they're reading your plates every city you go through, every toll booth, everything. So that doesn't hold the weight. But what I do want to say, I talked to my son-in-law, he's Assistant District Attorney in Summer County, and he has prosecuted several cases, major cases, using information they gained from, you know, flock. He said it's worth every penny from his perspective. But no good decisions made in haste. So if, if Mr. King could look at the contract, if we could try to resolve some of this and, you know, do our, you know, due diligence to make sure that this is, you know, done correctly, either if it has to be bid, if there's something in the contract that may, you know, be of some concern, we'd like to know. I am for the cameras. I just want to make sure that the process is done correctly. And I'll yield the floor.
Commissioner Preston.
I just want to say to the two citizens who spoke against the flock cameras, they were very prepared, very researched conversation. Thank you. I just want to tell you in the middle of where I'm at. I was in law enforcement meeting a week ago and I told about the lives, these cameras are saving the lives of the missing children that are being found. That's what we're being told. That being said, I want to yield the floor. Thank you all again.
Commissioner Price.
Real quickly, I don't know how many of you kept up with what's going on in Memphis. We've got a large influx of state and federal law enforcement down there. And one of the stats is coming out of Memphis. There was over a hundred missing or exploited folks have been discovered in Memphis. FBI Memphis will tell you Interstate 40 is one of the top, if not the top, trafficking of humans and missing and exporters. A lot of that out there, thank you, and you're good.
Mr. Arnold.
Madam Chair, just one, I think when we spoke to them last month on the TV, however they described it, that we was going to be able to get the installation at no cost for the county. We entered into a contract with them. This was the, they were extending the time for us to do that. We went from eight cameras to twelve. That was my motion with calls of the areas that we got to cover. Commissioner Fowler talks about the 1-9 and Loves truck stop that have covered a sugar crew, the 133, they get off there before they get to Big Sandy. If we was to wait, you know, face charge, I think it's at $1,500 to install, I may be off on that number a little bit, but it would take a couple of thousand either way. But if it was 12 cameras at $1,500 each, that's $18,000 that we'd be spending extra if we waited past the time to do it in a contract with them. I know that, like I said, the sheriff told me, the joint county, you know, they caught a guy that's murdered, you know, drunk, ten years, called the state out of all counties. They're pushing them out of Memphis, they're pushing them out of Jackson. Drive around with it. I think this is a good system. I think that we can, you know, we voted to do this. Our attorney, Mr. King, looked at the contract and went now and then, but we're assigned every problem with the contract. Maybe we could extend that action. He's going to say it was about $18,000. It would take $18,000, but I'm taking that number off the top of my head. You can tell that stays on the top of my head very well. So that's where we're at. Okay? Thank you.
Fowler.
Yeah. You know, and it does, it sounds like a good program, but do we got to do it one year? Can we do it one year or do we got to do it three years? Kenny, or what do you guys think?
One year.
But the GIF, I mean, does it got to be a one year or a three year? Or what does it have to be on the contract? It has to be a three-year contract. I mean, that's a lot of money.
Commissioner.
We're distressed county, almost distressed county.
So the only thing that I really have to say is like, Mike and Duane have brought up, I'm in favor of the cameras, but honestly, there's such pushback from the public, I can't in good conscience vote for it.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Okay. Okay. We're going to vote on it at this time. Okay. Everybody ready to vote? Everybody's already voted? Put me in.
Anyone want to change your vote? Danny asks five, now it's three yes.
Okay. Resolution has failed. Resolution nine is a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $5,350.44 received from the insurance payments on damaged sheriff department vehicles to an expenditure line item for the proper expenditure. I have a motion by Price and a second by Bain. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Resolution 10 is a resolution by the sheriff to budget funds in the amount of $300 received from miscellaneous refunds for the October, for the month of October to a proper line item to allow for expenditure. I have a motion by Commissioner King and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? There are none, so please vote.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Motion carries fifteen yes.
Okay. It's a resolution number 11 by Sheriff Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $30,000 received from Toledo Cost Sharing Grant to Proper Line Items for Expenditure. We have Commissioner Bain made a motion and seconded by King. The wording on this resolution is incorrect. Where it says decrease revenues at the very top, that needs to say, yeah, it needs to also say increase. We realized this in either the Budget Committee meeting. I don't know if some of you were there. Our budget advisor said that that wording was wrong. So it's just an error. So I need someone to make a motion to change that word from decrease to increase. The very beginning up here, at the top, the first, where it said decrease revenue, we're going to change that to increase revenue. Has something to do with the proper budgeting of the money. Just that one word. Okay. So who made the motion? Who? Arnold and who made the second? Price.
I thought it was Debbie and Jim.
Well, we had about four, so. Okay. So you're voting for the amendment? Please vote. Okay, now we're voting on the resolution as we just amended it. Anybody have any questions about it or?
I'm ready to vote for Adam.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Okay, resolution 12 is a resolution by Mayor Ward to seek commission approval of a new fee schedule and standard operating procedures for the Benton County Animal Shelter. I have a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Burke. Anyone have any questions?
So it's not a new fee schedule, it's just including the fee schedule and the standard operating procedures. The auditors were in the office and they asked to see it and we had them both, but they said they should be combined in the same document from here on out. So this is just to include the fee schedule in the standard operating procedures, which was all included in your package.
Commissioner King?
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Oh, I read this SOP and it lacks a lot. There's a lot of wording in it that needs to be looked at, redone, and just, I think we need to send it back and have it looked at again and maybe the county attorney look at it also. There's just a lot to it that doesn't make the, it's just some verbiage and all caps letters and all that stuff. So I think it needs to be sent back and redone.
Would you like to do that?
No, but I'll sure give you my copy of it, that I marked up.
Okay.
But it is, it just needs a little work.
Well, it's what was presented to us from the, whichever committee this is, the Animal Shelter.
I got you. I just think it needs some work.
Okay. Mr. Fowler.
You know, a couple of people asked me also, you're adopting it? You adopt, adopt the Caddo or something of that nature. Does all of them have to be spayed or neutered? Because some of the people, you know, they, they want them all spayed or neutered. There's no exceptions. They have to be. Okay, good deal. That's what I was looking for, trying to clear up. Thank you. I yield the floor.
You want to change that state law one?
No, not that one I don't.
Not that one I don't.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Everyone, please vote.
I thought we were going to send it back.
Well, nobody made a motion to do that and nobody pulled it, so we're voting on it.
When we voted, just resubmit it.
Get the crowd key.
You pay more attention, they get more of it. You're like amazed. You're amazed. You're amazed.
Resolution 13 is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds received from the Airport Grounds Equipment Grant to a proper line item for expenditure. I have a motion by Douglas and a second by Hollen. Any questions? I have a grant. There are none, so everyone, please vote.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Resolution 14 is a resolution by Mayor Ward to seek commission approval to enter into a agreement for a copier, printer, scanner system for the clerk and master's office and to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $1,250 for this purpose. We have a motion and a second by Fowler and Burke. Any questions about the copier? There are none, so please vote.
That is fine. It's all good. It's all good. Thank you.
Anyone want to change your vote? Attorney carries fifteen yes.
Resolution 15 is by Mayor Ward to seek commission approval to create a part-time. Did you pull that? Okay. That has been pulled by the mayor. Resolution 16 is a resolution by Commissioners Arnold and Murphy to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $12,000 to fund an AI technology subscription for the use of the Benton County Chamber of Commerce. I have a motion, Commissioner Price.
Madam Chair, we, the one stakeholders asked us to defer action on that until next month or should be.
Okay.
And also.
Okay. So resolution 16 has been pulled and resolution 17 has been pulled. Next on your agenda is appointing of nodaries. Okay, we don't have any nodaries, so we're down to any other business. We do have some resolutions that came in late, came in after the agenda was prepared, so we need a motion to suspend the rules. If you've got your, okay, for what? Resolution number? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Price.
So it is imperative that they get their money. I want to explain to you why these come in. Our grant writer and the ones that was helping us with the ARPA money, Matty Kushman, I know you all know her, she's over this project. This is TIDAC ARPA money. The contractors have already performed the work, but we didn't receive this until last week. They're waiting for their money. Matty asked us to get it in this month so the checks can go ahead and go out for the work that has already been completed. There'll be one more. The reason the money's not there is because, if y'all remember, at budget time, we had to clear out all the ARPA money from the accounts that was in or we had to pay it back to the state. So the Budget Committee agreed that when these bills come in, that we would appropriate the money and pay it then. I hate the fact that it didn't get to go through committee, but we didn't receive it until after the committee meetings. And if y'all don't want to do it, that's perfectly fine. Just know that the contractors will be waiting an extra month to get the money that they've already been waiting on, so. That's not true. They have not been paid because we have not appropriated the money and sent the checks. check.
Dr. Son.
Sir?
Okay, okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. If you want to suspend the rule for these three, vote yes. If you do not, then vote no. If you vote no, that means these three resolutions that we have, even the one for the sheriff, will be put off till next month. Okay. So if you're for suspending the rules for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, you'll be voting yes. If you do not want to, you'll vote no.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Can that be amended to the eighteen?
Mr. Arnold, you want to change it? Change your?
Before I started voting. Right, does it start, I mean, should the votes be?
Yeah, it's been called for the vote. Okay, we are voting, so if you want to vote on Resolution eighteen tonight, it's up to you, it's strictly up to the commission. So we're voting if we want to suspend the rules for all three or not. Yeah, I'd already called for the vote.
I mean, you don't have to vote on the resolutions.
Did you lock your vote?
Is that, is that nineteen and twenty, is that new money?
It's ARPA money.
It's money that we received, so it's not new money. We received this money to pay out the contractor. So we received the money, we're just passing it through to the expenditure account to, to pay these people what, what they're owed.
It's not new, it's not new money.
Now, this one's new money.
The first one is.
Even though it's ground.
Isn't it?
Man.
The first one is new money. Okay, you need to vote, please.
Just hit your vote again. Mr. Arnold, what?
Hit my vote again?
No. Mr. Blue. Hit a vote again. So it is nine yes, six no.
It's failed. Okay, so we won't be voting on that. Do we have any other business? Commissioner Preston?
Chairman?
Yes.
It's been voted made that Michigan's double the debt locker.
Okay.
And it was verified that that's true, it is lawful at this, can they make a virtual?
Okay, no, it is not a law that you can attend virtually. There is no law for that as of yet.
Can the rules again, so right there? Rules right change this one. It's okay, the rules again, right there. Take it with that, do three times. Yes or no? Are you done?
Okay, any other? Commissioner Price?
Commissioner Price, go ahead.
Commissioner Murphy?
Madam Chairman, I, I move to suspend the rules to consider Resolution number eighteen no.
Do we have a second?
I got it.
Who made the second?
Ooh, 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 ooh.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, what is that resolution?
It's the Sheriff's Department.
The Red Bird.
I've already put my resolution up.
It's the $30,000, they received a grant for the votes. New money, but it's not that effective.
It's funny to talk, oh, he's, I forgot what it was.
They gave you two anyway.
Okay, we need a motion, we've got a motion and a second?
Thank you.
To vote on Resolution eighteen only?
I need it, sir.
Okay, everyone in favor of voting on Resolution, suspending the rules to vote on Resolution eighteen, vote, please, if you're for it. Okay, tablets are ready.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Now, we will vote on Resolution eighteen. Does anyone have any questions about it? Okay, there are none, so everyone, please vote.
Yeah, motions.
To vote on eighteen.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Any other business, real quick? Okay, there are none, so I need a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Arnold and who else? Commissioner Miller, all in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand up.
Aye.
Aye.